All right, it's April 5th. I'd like to call this meeting to order August the 24th at 5:02. I'll ask Councilman Jeff Rinpro to lead us in a word of prayer.
Dear heavenly Father, Lord, as we gather here today, Lord, we ask for your blessing to be upon us. We ask that you provide us the knowledge that we need to conduct your business here in the city of Hartford. Lord, we thank you for everyone that is here in attendance. Lord, we ask that you watch over us all, keep us all safe, healthy and well. We pray and ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Before you have the, before I get into that, I want to say, be thinking about Tara and her family as they buried her grandmother. She's not going to be able to make it today. She's dealing with some stuff with that, I guess. So be thinking about her as well. Before you have the minutes of the last meeting, I'll ask for a motion to accept the minutes as read after you looked over them.
I make a motion to accept them because I read them from Courtney.
I'll second.
Motion by Mary Bell, second by Tony. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Polls like aye, motion carries. Thank you. Before you have the financial reports, bank statements, incoming statements, I'll give you a few minutes to look over that. If you have any questions, anything like that, I'll entertain the motion to be accepted.
Are we in discussion?
Yeah.
So on page one of the city check register. So my comment, and I guess I don't know where the parking lot is, but we pay the Anderson Corporation for parking. Which parking lot is that?
So it's right across here. So what we done, I'm glad you brought that up. What we done, it was in a limbo. The county had picked that up for years and they paid it. Well, they got out of it. And so we feel like, we felt like every time we do events, it's that blacktop on this side, on the other side of the road. We felt like it was important not to let that go. And so that's why we picked that up.
Okay.
So that's.
That's something you, I didn't have seen before.
Yeah, yeah. It's a good question.
And then I, sorry. I look this over.
That's good.
I know me and you have talked about it, but I didn't know. Maybe we can update the other council members and our guests about the multi-use trail.
Yes. So I've been talking to Bell Engineer on the multi-use trail. I'm actually going to Madisonville next week to meet with the Kentucky Transportation. They did have concerns about the overbridge going over 69. So they done their surveying and everything like that. We're just kind of at the mercy with the transportation as well as Bell Engineer on that project. So I will keep you all in the loop of things whenever we get there, so.
And then my other last comment on the financial report is that I see that we have Andy Brasher and Scott Ford Band, they're going to perform during Oktoberfest.
That's correct.
Is that on the schedule?
Yep. And that'll be the 21st and 22nd of October. Meredith and Stacia has been a big part of all of that on the Oktoberfest. She sits on that committee. So that'll be good things to happen. And they'll be publicizing that a lot more here pretty quickly as the time comes. So we look forward to that. They're going to have a 5K and I think some of the local churches will be involved, the library, they'll set up a movie, be a beer garden. Just a lot of activities going on, so.
I'm good. Yeah. I'm all for it.
So.
I think we need to bring them back. Good choices there on band as well.
Oh, yeah. Thank you for that. Does anybody else have any discussions on anything?
What about blacktop?
Yeah, I mean, that's going to be brought up after all of the, we go through our list here, if we're going to discuss that. We got some, we got some others that we want to do, but we're going to try to get a plan together on that too, so.
I have a question to ask.
Okay.
I don't, I haven't thought seriously about asking this. Does the city have any ordinances or the ability to have ordinances concerning drainage work that's done on private property? And the reason I say that is because it seems like everybody's wanting to cover up their ditches. And a lot of them are. Well, that water's going to go somewhere else if it doesn't go one direction. It will find another.
That is correct.
And I'm just wondering if there's any plan or any organization or anyone who have a note that divisional water.
Yeah, I mean, if it's anything within our easements, then we have the right to take actions. However, we need to take actions. I mean, from center line of the road, 25 feet, I think that's what it is, from center line of the road. So anything that's on us, we can take actions to clean these ditches out.
Well, I know. But have you been by the extension office?
Oh, yeah.
They have filled it and covered up.
But they have a lot of tile right there that, I think they put about a 48-inch tile in there.
Uh-huh.
And see, that is a state road, so they have to get permitted through the state to get all that done. And so they can't, they can't go in like we can and put a road tile in or anything. It has to be approved by the state before they can ever do anything like that.
And even though it's within the city limits, we have no say whatsoever.
Not on a state road like that.
Well, you know.
Yeah, that's a state.
That shouldn't be.
When it comes, when it comes to ditches, the only thing that it ever comes down to is if any private property owner does a bunch of work and it changes the flow of water and it's on somebody else, that doesn't come back on you. That goes to every property owner that is, that turns into a civil issue, so.
Yeah. And that's my point. I mean, do we have any control from going this direction or this direction? Or it could be the same.
Like you said, the only thing is your, your livelihood. But once it comes to private property, whatever they do and whatever they screw up, unless they screw up on you, they do it to them, but then it turns into a civil issue. You can't, you can't divert water on your property to somebody else if you do that.
Well, that's what it appears is happening.
Well, what they, like you said, what they've done up there, they put a gigantic tile.
Yeah, I know.
I know they covered their ditch up, but they, they put a bunch, a bunch of tile. So it shouldn't be too big a deal here. But if it is, then.
Nobody will ever do anything.
It doesn't, it doesn't come back on you, it's going to come back on them. If it runs a bunch of water down into their neighbors or the church or whatever, but that's a civil issue. It wouldn't, it wouldn't.
Well, everybody thinks there's a creek running through there, so we don't have to worry about it.
Right.
But that eventually goes right on down, hook into muddy creek, goes right on down to Centertown Road and Fluts.
Yeah. But now.
But.
I mean, you won't, you won't know until it does.
Right.
We already know it does and we're letting people do it anyway. I mean, I just wonder, that, things like that bother me because.
I get it.
Anytime you, you go to divert any water, it's going to affect someone else who may not be able to do anything about it.
But at the same time, the only reason I would even speak up about it is because Beaver Dam deals with it. Every time it rains and floods, it don't block the head.
Right.
That's, that's what's talked about. And it's, it's a nightmare because as I've said, climate change is real. So you just got to prepare for it.
Mayor, I try to get us back on schedule here. I'll make a motion to accept the July 23 financial report. I've got a first. Do I have a second?
Second.
Station. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Polls like aye, motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Marissa, do you care to come up and discuss the, the property donation here?
You want one? Lewis Square is the property that, that contacted me and wants to donate it to the city. It is abandoned property and taxes haven't been paid since 2012. So they're wanting to give it to the city. And if you look on the map, it joins the cemetery because we own all around.
Is it that, turn up that little road beside this? I can't think of the name of it.
Here's the water tower.
Yeah.
Where next to the cemetery is this one?
Here's the water tower. And then wait on all this and all this. So it's right there.
Do you get there by that little road?
It's right by that. That was the same one?
Yeah. Actually, it's in the cemetery one.
Okay.
It's like. One has a fence stand and drives right up to the back of the water tower.
Okay.
No, 2023, Nightcare, right?
Yeah. But she just contacted us and asked if that was something that we would want. That she wants to donate it.
Well, I think we should take it.
Yeah. They're not growing them or laying them. So I guess, should we go on and roll call that?
I need to make a motion.
So the motion or? No, as long as the acknowledgement is to agree to do that, we'll be okay. So if everybody's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
You'll probably want to get a motion accepted if you didn't.
Yeah.
Just.
Yeah, just go on and do.
I wouldn't pay attention.
Yeah, let's just go on and do a first and second.
It's better to do it than not to do it.
Do a first and second.
I already have the motion we accept this property.
I'll second.
Second's all over the place. Take a picture.
So do I just get Tara and?
Yep.
Mary Bell was first.
Mary Bell was first. Take the station. All right, thank you. Thank you for doing that. Okay, next, we, we've looked at some of our sidewalk projects and we're just hit or miss. So anytime that you all have some that you all wanted us to look at, by all means, reach out and we'll get estimates because it is a safety issue. And I've got two different ones, so we'll have to have two different motions to accept, I guess. The first one, the first one is from Monroe Construction. And this is on Render Street. And it's, basically it's all still intact. It's just slid in and there's, there's a lot of repairs that needs to be done. And that total is $1,760. And that cost is a little bit down because the city's going to provide help with the equipment instead of that company happened to rent it out. So I'll ask for a motion to accept, and this is budgeted for, so we don't have to take it out of occupation or anything like that. So I'll ask for a motion to accept Monroe Construction on the first one being Render Street at $1,760.
I like the motion. Second.
I got a first and second, first by Tony, second by Mary Bell. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Polls like aye, motion carries. The second one being on Mulberry Street, same thing. The city's going to provide the equipment to do some of the repairs, take out whatever needs necessary. So that project is going to be $2,000, $2,092.75. And this is on Mulberry Street. And I'll ask for a motion to accept Monroe to do this project as well.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
So I've got that one and that one. Okay. And like I said, if y'all have got any more to bring up.
I just think.
Okay.
So when is it?
I will call them tomorrow and hopefully they'll get on it pretty quickly, so. All right. So everybody has the ordinance 2023-4. This is a first reading on the water sewer tap-ons. Does somebody care to read that?
I'll read it. Ordinance 2023-04. An ordinance of the city of Hartford, Kentucky, amending portions of ordinance number 2014-02 regarding the schedule of rates and charges for use of the water and sewer services and facilities of the combined and consolidated municipal water and sewer system.
Thank you. Do you care to elaborate on that a little bit for them so they can be brought up to speed on this?
So this is actually amending ordinance 2014-02. And you can see with the dollar amounts that are marked through is the amounts that we were current or are currently charging for the three-fourths inches was 650. Our actual cost is $1,200. So that would be updating so that we would just break even at getting a water tap-on. And then you see there for the one inch and the two inch, the prices accordingly. And then if you look at the second page, you can see on sewer side, when we have sewer tap-ons, we have a price difference, of course, as well, because like I said, these were set in 2014 where we had residential of $350, where our cost is 650. And non-residential was 750 and our cost is 950. So all this ordinance is doing is updating 2014 prices with current prices that we're actually paying.
Do you have extra one of those sheets? I didn't get one.
So is a three-fourth inch, is that a resident, a home, an individual's home or what's the difference?
That's a residential home.
Which one?
The three-quarter.
Okay. And then what's the one inch?
That's usually more for use for businesses or.
All right.
I make a motion that be.
Well, it's just a roll call. No, there's no roll call. It's just a first reading, so it'll be at the next meeting. We'll roll call it. All right, thank you for that. Next thing I have on here is from Miller Building Supply. We've got a quote. It's been something that I've thought about and talked about and open for discussion. I've kicked around the idea of putting a picnic shelter at the boat ramp down there. And we received a quote from Miller's Building Supply. And this, this is budgeted as well. I just think it, it's a nice area down there and I would like to see what we can do to keep going forward with that as well.
I make a motion to accept the quote for the picnic area at the boat dock.
What was the total? We've got a first by Stacia, a second by Mary Bell. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Polls like aye, motion carries. Thank you. And that, that project will be hopefully up and going pretty soon as well, so. I think, I guess we can go on and talk about this. I discussed this with Jeff last night a little bit. We don't have to take action on it right now, but moving into blacktop a little bit. I've got a quote from Scotty's from Gillespie, Gillespie Street tied into the hospital. And this is just one side of it. It is at $27,681.93. Again, this is just, it don't have to take action today, but we are in a time that November they'll probably shut down blacktopping. So I'm open for suggestions if we want to move on that. That's fine. If not, we'll, we'll table it for another day.
And which road is this?
It's right there off Gillespie.
Shouldn't the hospital be liable for some of that?
I've, I've reached out to them and we had this discussion yesterday. And they've, since then, after reaching out, they, they told me that they've changed administration. And they are going to let me know either way. But.
I thought there was early discussion that they were.
There was with Mr. Piper now. And so I don't know that that still stands, but it's there, it's out there. And I'll do my best to see what I can do to kind of push it. I've talked to them too as well. They basically didn't give me a straight answer, but didn't say no.
Can, is there a way that we could, it seems like I wasn't part of the council, I think it was last council, that they were here discussing about the renovations and the expansion and things like that. Is there anything in, in those minutes that, what they discussed and what they proposed that they were doing?
I don't think there is because we kind of, we went back to look even before, because even when we started the patchwork.
I think Tony Ward was part of that discussion.
He was. And, and it's one of the things that I talked to her, I talked to him. I've got a meeting with Shelley Schaus in the next couple of days, maybe next week. She'll be the one that, she's basically the one that has the final say-so on things. So, but that, like I said, that's just informational. We don't have to act on it tonight. And I'll, I'll keep digging to see if we can come up with.
What about the other streets you talked about?
I've got the quotes on them. Popular.
Oh, yeah. And then Emery and then.
And some of those that me and Jeff talked about as well. There's some tile work that we need to do before we can start.
Yeah. And then there's that one house that's being built back there. I think it'd probably be best if we kind of delayed those for the tile work and the construction of that new home.
And what I would like to do pretty soon is we can have a special call meeting and focus on blacktop. And I told Jeff as well, I think it'd be important to take sections at a time to focus on what we want to do instead of jumping here and there. We can focus on one portion of the city and work that out before we just jump everywhere else. So I would like to see that in the near future, so. All right. If we don't have nothing on that, we'll move on.
Well, I think maybe can, can we table the Glebsey?
Yeah, that's fine.
Hospital until we get an answer?
Yeah, it can be tabled.
Italian.
Yeah. Most definitely. I'm fine with that. I have no problem with that.
I do, I want to say though, it does need to be, you know, because I went by there the other day and it's, it's pretty bad shape.
Yeah.
And if I was a resident there, I'd want it done too. But I just like to get an answer.
Yeah, the hospital ought to be contributing to this.
I, I can agree with that. And I will, I will do what I can to kind of get some commitment out there, so.
It's in bad shape. Start with it, it's even worse.
Their equipment.
Yeah. So I'll see what I can do on that part of it. Let's see if I've got anything else. I've got something that I would like to make the motion that we go in closed session to discuss some property.
I make a motion, we move into closed session.
A second.
A second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We'll be back here in a little bit. Won't take very long for this discussion and we'll be back here in a little bit. Thank you. No, nothing was voted on or anything of that nature, just for discussion, so.
I need a first and second.
Yeah. I need a first and second to come back open for the council.
A second.
First and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Polls like aye. As you all have seen in your envelopes that you've had for the grad annual meeting, September the 13th at 11:30. Just get with Lisa if you would like to go so she can put you on the list to participate in that. Starts at 11:30.
City going to pay for that?
Grad will.
Grad will.
Yeah.
Are there any other somewhere to stand in if you pay, if you was coming?
No, Grad will take care of it. Chris, do you have anything?
I don't have nothing else to move on.
All right. Ronnie, do you want?
Yeah, I didn't tell y'all nothing, my computer is out of access at the moment, but I'll give y'all something. We sent out letters for abandoned properties. I talked to all about it. Anybody who responded with a plan of action was given a little grace. There's several who said they was, I know there's one down, it's down by River Bend. That gentleman says that house is historical. He's going to tear it down and take the wood and repurpose it. Several people did respond, said they would have, one had cancer and had to put off some work about his, but he was going to get back up and running. So if they contacted us or reg out in any way, we gave them a little grace till the next tax time. There's still a few, I don't think we heard anything from.
The one that has a plan, does he have a plan to do it by the next tax time?
That's understandable.
And I think you, Lisa and Ronnie both have been in contact with Tara on some legal I do know.
Most people get their yard mowed if I tell them. Some of them don't. It takes a minute, but they usually get it. Usually have the same houses. I usually have to go tell them, then after I tell them, they'll mow it. There's a couple of canvals sitting around town. They've been contacted to get unhooked from the city water. They can have them sitting in their yard and plugged up like through the summer to keep their refrigerators running, is what it is. But can't get on the water of the sewer. Of course, they have a vote on them. I think Lisa's mailed them out some letters, see what can be done about that. Had several complaints about the ditches. There you go. I mean, who's supposed to mow the ditches?
Good question.
What about that on Weller Street, that old trailer?
They were mailing a letter. They were sending a letter.
Who is responsible for?
I don't think they were sending a note that they were doing. That they would be in charge of a higher, higher tax rate because it's abandoned property.
We can make landowners.
I think all those areas are past.
Or an old man straight up from, you know where the back of Dr. Vanek's place is?
Yep.
They changed that fence where the grass was grown up higher than the fence.
That was taken care of today? That was taken care of today?
I didn't know if that's the city's or that property.
Well, basically, it's pretty well ours. And that's what I told Jason. Jason told me today that they did take care of it because that was on my list. And so I noticed that the other day myself, so. Anytime that you all have anything like that, reach out to Ronnie.
I don't care, we go look into it and see. I try to drive around and stay on call of it. Thing is, that's what I tell about some people, they're like, yeah, I mow it, but you know, I gotta wait till I get the money to buy the gas. There's a house over just up to Bowles' house. They got a bunch of junk toys sitting in the yard. What I consider junk toys. But I drive by there several times a week. There's little kids out there playing on them. I mean, it's not junk to them. That's what I tell them, that's their prized possession. So it's, it's hard sometimes because what I would consider junk, you know what I'm saying? They play with it. They, so it's kind of tough sometimes.
Or the bad place on Render Street too, 127 Render. That little trailer there and the whole ditch is growed up bad.
There's no property, no home there, right? Just a field?
No. No, there's a trailer there and a house on the other side of it.
If you're going to come down from that. Yeah. We have to run one if you would.
I have another check to look at. Like I said, if you. Look at, like I said, if you have one you're concerned about, Paul, I'd be more glad to go check on it. Talk to them, um, like I said, there's several, I have a lot of issues. It's, oh, there's one down here on the corner of Mulberry and Washington. I've been down there numerous times, there's another one on Mulberry, every other week I have to go there and tell them, "Mow your yard." Like I said, usually after I tell them, they'll mow it. We also did have a meeting with the committee and would like to raise the fees from 25 to 50.
I think we'll have to get with Tara on that would have to be under an ordinance, or, yeah. So we'll have to, we'll have to do that in an ordinance to change, um... So, I'm okay with that. Okay, um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get Rachel. Rachel and them spent quite a amount of time today calling customers concerning water bills. Um, not going into detail about it, but I think there's maybe five pages. Well, we have Reach Alert, and it's something that we're gonna implement more and more to get away from these phone, phone calls. So y'all will see that advertised pretty soon on Reach Alert, and I would highly recommend that you, uh, share that, because we're gonna put it in newspapers as well as social media. Um, we just need to get these residents on Reach Alert, that way they get the messages out there, and they'll, "Hey, time for water bills," or if you got a, uh, boil advisory, it'll send everything out for you. So, just be, be looking out for that, I appreciate everything that she does. Everyone almost calling every, today, so...
Was it delinquent water bills, or...
People that have not paid as of today, or people that have to pay. That's not true, the people that are already shut off for, uh, delinquent for multiple months, that's just current accounts.
So is that automated?
Huh?
Is that automated?
Automated.
What, Reach?
Reach or...
So it automatically senses that they're playing or whatever?
She would pack.
Call for the mess man, and I'll send a tale about it.
Yeah, it'd just be one message for everybody.
How about to the car wash?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, and sanitary.
Well, I mean, there are lots clean. They were told to park around front, park around back, now they're parking around back, it's an issue they park around back now. I mean, but there are lots clean, they keep it picked up, they keep it neat, I don't know, I don't know what in my control I can do about that.
I don't know.
What is that anyway?
Trash collecting, I think.
Yes.
It's what?
Trash collecting. Trash collecting?
For the city?
No.
No, it's private.
Independent?
A trash service is on, it's a patient.
I don't know.
Anybody show my permit?
Do they have a business license?
Yeah, I think they do have a business license.
My only issue is just, I mean, all the, if even moving around back, there are trash trucks parked in a residential...
Well, they're, they're around back.
Yeah.
See, they were parked around front.
I know, which looked ugly.
Now we're getting complaints around back.
And I understand it too, because that's residential back there, if those come back stinking, and that's awful. And...
We'll look into the business.
Even wash out their trucks?
Do they?
The house has been closed out for most of the month.
It has?
They don't even have running water.
They're not.
They don't have a business license or...
They do have a business license, but they don't have running water.
For a trash pickup?
Right.
We got to park, I think.
Was the car wash still licensed as a car wash with water?
That I don't know either.
I imagine it's probably under Stephen Edge, he's the one that owns the, the car wash. Or, I think he might be, it might be leased, I think he's leasing that is what I think it is.
I want it in business.
That's what it is.
Just trash collection.
Well, that's something that we need to discuss with, um, Stephen as well as that business, because whoever's naming it is, they want business license or water, you know what that is. They do have the business license, but they don't have water.
You mean the city can do nothing to get that cleaned up?
I mean, yeah.
I would think, you don't have...
Stephen Edge owns that trailer lot.
Logical thing to do, to wash out your hoppers and your trucks if you're gonna be parked in those.
You guys, excuse me, mind if I have a solution for me, you get with me, and I would be more glad if it comes off.
I appreciate it, we'll...
I've got a list for you, if you don't care.
I watch it.
All right.
For all you do, Ronnie.
Thank you.
I don't think I've ever done this job, I'm just thinking of some other bits of period.
I'll have to have her check on both business license and water.
So, I guess that's all I have. Um, now for discussion, roundtable discussion, council. Jeff, do you have anything to bring up?
I, I have one thing, uh, that we haven't discussed, uh, I know there's, there's been a lot of overnight parking at Ellis Park. I, I would say it's probably those duplexes.
So, I'll have the cops to... Do right, uh... Drop by. Yeah.
Down change.
Yeah, I'll come and reach out to them, see what you...
And I think they got broken into again, is what Jason told me as well.
Yeah, the locks are busted off, or the locks are gone from the bathrooms and, uh, storage building.
If we get anything nice, we're not gonna get to keep it.
You have to park, yes.
Bieber name experiences the same thing.
Yeah.
I do too, I mean, it's, it's awful, like, you get it everywhere, any park.
Keep a light on it all the time, and I don't know if that'd be...
Well, they got one down there on the basketball side, you know.
Can we not get cameras put out there?
We can set some up, matter of fact, we can, I've set a lot of trail cameras up here lately. I mean, that's something that we could do now, but a lot of those now have to run Wi-Fi on, on, on a lot of cameras, but you can do trail cameras to set up, so I'll put that on the list as... Yeah. Well, what I've done, what I've done in the past, I'm gonna go on record saying this, we've made bird feeders and set the trail cameras in the bird feeders, that way nobody really knows there's cameras sitting there, so...
Yeah, 'cause if they see the camera, they're gonna throw rocks or something at that too.
And some of them, some of them we have, we have them hanging really high where you can't even get to them and face them down, so I'll put that on there too.
Could we put some kind of alert alarm if they hit the building hard enough to bust the lock off of it, that it would, you know, send the signal?
Well, basically, I've got some that it'll, it'll go straight to my phone. Um, so, yeah, anytime anything's going on at that time, it'll, it'll pick it up, and it'll, it'll send you an alert on it, so...
Might have cameras on duty.
Yeah.
Go, they're calling, so if somebody walks up to it.
Yep.
They're calling.
Yep, I'll send it to chief, and maybe they can, him and the lieutenant can...
I think we would need to buy some, and we need to...
Yeah, I'll, I will definitely get on that, I got that on my list, and there's something, oh, PPA. Okay, thank you, is that...
Yeah, well, we, me and you discussed a few things, I don't know if it's to be, you know, you wanna talk about them here, or about our prevention plan, or something going forward. Uh, I, so what it is, I asked the mayor the other day if we had some type of, uh, drug prevention plan, if we did your analysis on our employees, uh, not that I suspect anybody using or anything like that, just as far as a preventive method. So, that was an idea that we had talked about, uh, I don't know how anybody else feels about that. We do have employees using equipment, you know, lawn mowers, garbage trucks, you know, bike hoes, other equipment, stuff like that. And once again, not suspecting anybody using anything at all, but just if we had a preventive maintenance or preventive plan in place.
So if you're saying someone tests positive for a substance, where, what would be our next step?
Yeah, what would be our next step?
So basically, I said treatment.
Yeah, do we offer, do we offer a treatment program, are they automatically fired, uh, what, what is...
If there's an accident, it's automatic.
Don't we have a zero tolerance?
If there's an accident, there's what?
Drug.
It's automatic.
Oh, yes, yeah, and that's pretty much, most places do that, uh, if there's an accident...
Well, then that means zero, to get caught and get fired.
Yeah, that's probably, if law building protocol.
But, do we wanna wait till there's an accident to know that we could prevent someone, or if we could even help someone if they have a problem? And like I said, I don't know anybody that has a problem.
I think it's one of the things in that, in that discussion, we really need to focus on our policy and procedure handbook. It hasn't been updated since when?
2009.
2009.
Geez.
So, we really need to focus on getting that done, and that could be something that, if we feel the need to be implemented, um, uh, we'll, we'll discuss those. We have to pay...
Five grand.
Five grand to Kentucky Leeds City for the draft, and then get back to us, and then it'd be voted on in our policy and procedures.
I think for guidance, maybe look to see what the county does, is it, there's city, county, and then state. And as a state employee, if, well, we don't have random drug screens, but if there was a drug screen and we tested positive, we would have the option for treatment.
And that's basically what the county offers. County offers the same thing.
And then, at that time, you wouldn't do a disciplinary action.
Right, if they selected to be...
If they selected to do treatment, and then they come back, and then if it happens again, you know, just a different tiered approach to, to their treatment efforts and staying employed. I like that, I agree with that.
And that's one of the things...
Yeah, yeah.
I think it's...
Because, you know, I'm, I'm sorry.
You're fine.
You wouldn't wanna fire them. That's, that's discriminatory under the Americans with Disabilities Act, substitutes disorders of disability. So, I think we would be progressive with the times to have something in place, and it's just the right thing to do.
So, my question is, do, uh, 'cause it's gonna take a, a team effort, do y'all want to try to get our policy and procedures together, tackle it all, or do you wanna try to go after this policy here? I mean, it, we got a lot of catching up to do on our policies, so I'm open for suggestions.
They need to, we should be like, do it all at once.
Yeah.
Is it possible that all the council members could be provided a handbook, and we can look it over, and kinda like...
And that'll, that'll, it's mandatory to be done.
But the la, but the last time we had one council member that read it.
Yeah.
So if you were talking like this much, it's giving me a lot to read it, not read.
Well, if, in that same sentence, then if, if y'all are in favor, um, I'll, uh, I'll entertain a motion right now to go on and pay the $5,000 to KLC for the policy and procedure book, and then it'd be revised at our mercy, and then sent back to them, and then, and then it'll be in, it'll be in our minutes, and, uh, that's how it'll be conducted.
Do we need to make the motion to pay KLC $5,000?
Yes.
I make the motion to pay KLC $5,000.
Where would you like to take? Where would you like to take that out of?
Uh, suspension tax.
Mayor Bill Pay.
And take that in my paycheck. We can make it strong.
Yep.
I guess so.
And then, and like I said, so you said occupational?
Yeah.
Occupational.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in black side, motion carries, thank you. And this'll take a lengthy process, but I say let's, um, let's act on it, because there's a lot of fine line in there, and if you see something that you might catch your eye, that might not be suiting, uh, highlight it, bring it up, and, uh, let's try to get everything correct.
Why do you say it'll take a lengthy process?
Well, it's, it's a big book.
I know. I have done that to this, I know how big it is.
So, yeah.
I wrote zero policy, that's why.
Obvious, I haven't read it, and so is there an evaluation? Do we do employee evaluations, or how do, do we...
Far as the drug screening?
No, uh, totally new topic.
It's in the handbook.
It's in the handbook that we do, our employees are evaluated on a yearly basis.
On the, on the KLCs for $5,000, yes, it's in there, we would do evaluations. Yep, okay.
And this is standard for all cities, this is not fine-tuned for Hartford?
Right.
Okay.
What they do is for Kentucky cities.
Okay.
So, and it's directed toward the city local government rather than a business type.
Okay.
So it's geared specifically to...
So we would just review this big book and adapt it to our own, to be our own.
Yep.
How long would it take KLC to get a draft?
Hopefully, it wouldn't take them very long, 'cause they should have all that, I mean, they're shipping them out to everybody, so we should have that pretty soon. So, she'll, she'll get on that, and, and, maybe we can get that together. And when we get them in, I'll just have, I'll have her call everybody, that way y'all have them beforehand, and, uh, we can look at them from there, so...
Okay, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
You're fine. Stacy, you have anything?
Um, I sent you some more pictures of sidewalks.
Okay.
They're really bad up in down Union.
Okay.
Uh, bound at some point be a liability right there in front of the Methodist Church.
Okay, I'll get a quote on that as well.
Cut out, there's a couple different spots. And the work that we had had done, I don't know when we had the sidewalks put in in you, down Union, how many years ago that's been? And you may have recognized, I don't know, there's some, I don't know if they're drains or what they are, but they're rectangles, plastic rectangles that sit in the sidewalk about two inches. So, whether they've sunk, or whether they were made that way originally, those are huge trip hazards.
And that's on what street?
It's Union.
Oh, so that is...
It's down there.
Is this the picture right here?
No, he didn't take any pictures of those, I need to go by and take the pictures of those.
Okay, I'll check.
But it's kind of across from, uh, the Smith's, Lance Smith's house.
I know where you're at.
Other side.
Yep.
So, it's the brand-new part of the sidewalks, but there's some, I don't know what.
It looks like maybe they hit it with a riding lawnmower turning around or something, and it's kicked that lid up or something like that?
Well, no, the lid itself is sunk down probably two inches below the pavement level, so like...
I usually run by there too, I've seen that kick.
Be careful. Yeah, so they, um, and the sidewalk, they may not be on there either, the sidewalk on the Smith's, right in front of the Smith's, the lip of the sidewalk, like, it's like, again, a two or three-inch lip, just going from one segment of sidewalk to another, that a runner, or cyclist, or kid, my kids specifically, have fallen.
I don't know.
Yeah, so...
All right, I'll put that one on the list as well, and I'll see if we can get a quote with the next meeting. The only thing that I'm gonna have to figure out on that is, I really don't know who would be responsible for the wall.
Yeah.
So...
I don't either. The big chunk on this side.
On that side?
Yeah.
There on Union Street?
Union, right there by the Methodist Church, down from the steps, you know what I'm talking about?
But I, I will...
That's there on the corner? That wall?
Kinda, I see, so this is, this is like right in front of the Methodist.
Oh, okay.
There's more, that's the, like a big chunk, um, all that's unlevel, uh, unlevel. Oh, that one, the big chunk right out. See, you walk down the sidewalk, somebody turn an ankle on that one.
Let you be weird, Harvey.
I'd be down for, I'd be down for the count, y'all would not see me in a long time.
They'd be bringing in a big, big truck to haul me in.
Very well.
So you got?
That's all I got, just sidewalks.
Okay, I will have them check that out. Uh, you got anything to bring to the table?
I don't.
Okay.
What's going on there on 231? Did someone buy that property from Junior Thompson, and are they gonna build something there?
Yeah, so, that's gonna be a five-star, I'm sorry if I've neglected to say anything. I think I sent a message out about it. Uh, basically, it's gonna be a five-star gas station, they, he sold it to Five Star, Junior Thompson sold it to Five Star. Um, they, they're in the process, they hope to have that project done, maybe, um, mid of next fall, maybe, so... They're, they're trying to move on it pretty quickly.
Yeah, I noticed that Minnella was nerfed.
Yeah, yeah, so...
Is that city Hartford?
Huh?
That city of Hartford there?
Yeah.
Yes.
Mary Bell, got anything?
No. Not yet, not tonight.
Okay. Tony, you got anything?
No.
Okay.
You better go before Mary Bell changes.
I second.
All right, you got a first, a second. All in favor, say aye.
I think that was...
No.